School District Regular Board of Education Meeting, today is July the 12th, and it is 5:07 PM, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we do that, I would like to ask Dr. Brighi to lead us in a moment of silence.
Thank you, and good evening. Just eight days ago, on July 4th, the community of Highland Park, Illinois, in the North Shore suburbs of Chicago, gathered together as a community to celebrate the 4th of July for the first time in two years. The Highland Park 4th of July Parade welcomes guests from all over the Midwest region, as well as students in their bike and pet parades, to local and middle school, high school students that are playing in the band. Highland Park is a community that is part of a treasured family of traditions for neighbors throughout the North Shore. Fourteen minutes into the parade, seven lives were taken, and over twenty people were wounded due to an active shooter who positioned himself on top of a building above the parade crowd. Please join me in a moment of silence to demonstrate our solidarity in sharing the grief with the families that are mourning the loss of a loved one, with the victims that are recovering from this trauma. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brighi. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Stern if she would lead us in the flag salute, please.
Flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Constitution and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Halimi, will you please lead us in the, or read the mission and vision statement?
I'd be happy to. "In a safe and supportive community, BHUSD will deliver a rigorous and enriching quality education and prepare all students to thrive as productive citizens in a complex, changing world. All students will be inspired to act with integrity and realize their academic potential while achieving college and career readiness."
Thank you. May I have approval? Oh, actually, Dr. Brighi, will you please comment on closed session?
Yes, one second, please. Do you have the number?
We could do the agenda first, it's before closed session action.
I don't have the...
I'll make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Are you ready to report?
Yep, ready. In closed session, the Board of Education has voted to approve 5 to 0 OAH case 2022 40441.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the BHUSD Community Spotlight, and on the agenda for tonight's meeting is 4th of July and Independence Day. It's, you know, unfortunate the events that have happened in Chicago. Typically, Independence Day and 4th of July is such a time of celebrating and bringing communities together, as well as reflecting on our country's independence and, you know, honoring our veterans. And it's just, it's unfortunate, the events, but we still wanted to reflect on this holiday and what this means to all of us, so I'm gonna start with Dr. Brighi.
Thank you, and I appreciate very much this opportunity to lead the moment of silence for Highland Park, Illinois, and every family that has been impacted by this tragedy. Those of you that know me will understand the significance of the location of this last mass shooting. If you weren't already aware, before I joined the Beverly Hills Unified School District, I was the superintendent of the North Shore School District in Highland Park, Illinois. It's a community in which I had the honor, not only to lead, but to also be part of for several years. My heart is broken for my former school district and community, people that I know personally and professionally lost their lives, and several former students have been wounded. My heart hurts because I've realized that yet again we're faced with another tragedy that was preventable. Allow me to share a little bit about Highland Park, Illinois. It's a strong community, closely knit. It's one of the wealthiest communities in the entire country. The schools are among the best in the state. It's predominantly Jewish community. It's a generational community where people return to Highland Park to raise their families and go to school. This sounds all too familiar, right? We can never take for granted the community in which we live and work. Senseless acts of violence do not discriminate. I am grateful to know that no matter where I work or live, I'm surrounded by an incredible, strong community here in Beverly Hills, to whom I'm thankful for every day.
Thank you, Dr. Brighi. And next, we're going to hear from Mrs. Marcus, who just returned from holiday.
Well, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about my life in Minnesota as a young girl, and July 4th. It's interesting that I never really got to think a lot about July 4th when I was a young girl growing up, because from the time I was about seven years old, to the time I was about fourteen, my parents, the minute school let out, shipped me off to summer camp, where I would spend at least four to eight weeks on a lake in Minnesota. And there was really very little celebrations up there on the lake, because we were surrounded by forests, and we would eventually, perhaps on July 4th, have a cookout, sing songs, the counselors would tell stories. There were really no fireworks, but they would probably float a firework on the lake, and they would do that in some way, but no fireworks like we saw, or we see today. They are much different today. When I returned home after I wellered with fourteen years of age and on, my parents had a sailboat on another lake. Minnesota's got ten thousand lakes, and this lake was in the heart of Minneapolis, and he, my father, had a sailboat, and we would take the sailboat out on July 4th. So we really started to do a family reunion type of thing with many members of the family, sailing on the lake, and then watching and listening to the music being played from the bandstand, which was right next to the lake, and then watching the fireworks that were provided by the Minneapolis City Parks and Recreation Department. By the way, we would wait there by the dock, and we would go up and buy popcorn for five cents, and an ice cream cone for five cents, if you can imagine. That was a really very wonderful time. Could also fish from the sailboat a little bit, if my father led us, and of course, the only thing we caught were catfish. I don't know why they call them catfish, except they do have long whiskers, and they're not very edible, but that was the fish that we caught. But the one you see right here was, the lady from California outdid everybody in Minnesota by catching a twenty-eight foot, a twenty-eight inch walleye. And unfortunately, you have to throw it back, because it's too long. You can only bring out of the lake anything that's twenty inches, because she's loaded with eggs, and they need her for next year. So basically, that's how we celebrated the July 4th, was on the lake, on the sailboat, and enjoying the music and the fireworks that were provided. It was a wonderful time for members of our family, and I wish that everybody could enjoy that type of thing, because it's a marvelous, marvelous thing to do. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Michelle, for sharing. I'm just gonna go around quickly. Gabe, do you have anything to share?
No, I've heard these stories a number of times. Thank you for sharing the information of where you go. I hope I can take my kids there sometime, because it sounds like some awesome summers, so... I hope we get to experience it at some point.
Yeah, I was hoping to see a picture of the grandkids. Is that one in the back?
Yeah, that's Elon in the background, he's fishing, fishing also.
And the other one was jet skiing.
The guy's name is Matt, and we hire him from a company called Walleye Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. For me, July 4th is the day I got engaged. I proposed from a stage, we were performing a show, in front of many, many people in Oregon. So it's always, has a whole demeaning to me.
Thank you, no, that's a great memory. I think the thing that I find so lovely is that no matter where you go on 4th of July, that there's that commonality of community, and we see, like, I was in Aspen this past summer. I've spent other summers here, I've spent summers in Sun Valley, or I've been in Utah, and there's a parade, it's the, you know, the town coming together. It's the kids on bikes in the parade, and the fire trucks coming through, and the fireworks, and even though things have changed, and sometimes the tone has changed, the community and that feeling of community and coming together, and really that feeling of really being rooted is such a wonderful feeling, that I think that's the piece that we can all connect to. I mean, even the fireworks now, like where we were in the Colorado Rockies, it's now that it was a laser show, because we can't have the fireworks, and to Michelle's point, you're doing catch and release with the fish, but it's, the feelings remain the same, and the connection remains the same, and I think that's really such an important piece.
Nothing further. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brighi. We're gonna go back to the closed session report from Dr. Brighi, he's gonna make a minor correction.
Thank you, so that's what my mind is on now. Just a correction on the number. So in board, in closed session, it's approval of OAH case 2022 050990. I apologize. The action was 5 to 0 approving that OAH case.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is item 8, Consent Calendar. May I have approval of consent, a motion for approval for Consent Calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar. Anybody pulling? Okay.
I will second the motion.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is Superintendent Reports. Dr. Brighi.
Thank you. I had some issues with my computer, so let me see if this will share. I'm sorry, I'm gonna present. There we go, just a short report for you. And I'm sorry that bar is there. If somebody could grab that, because I don't have that remote. This was Eli's job. It'll be Alex's job soon. Just a short report and update for you today. Very excited to be able to announce, on behalf of the high school who attended the USA National Championships in Atlanta, Georgia. This was a couple of weeks ago. And our KBEV team, many who are here today, we have an all-female team that were the highest national broadcast honors in KBEV history, with sixth place in the entire nation, so... So that's a wonderful accomplishment, for sure, for our individual students, but also for our school district as well. So congrats to Eden, Lila, Akira, and Sarah. And also at the bottom, a quick congratulations to Seema, who was in the top fifteen national field baking students. So congratulations to all of our students, national award winners. Rotary President, I know that Mrs. Wells and I and Ms. Darcans are in our Beverly Hills Rotary, which is an honor for us to be part of, and there's a lot of work that's done in our partnership with the community and Rotary. And just wanted to announce and congratulate our new president, J.R. Zubak, sorry, Zubak. And J.R. has a real focus on working in partnerships with our schools, so we're very excited that he has taken on his presidency as of yesterday. And he is a real passionate leader, and has a lot in store for our schools this term for him as president, and we look forward to bringing you a lot of updates over the next year that directly involve and impact our students. And also, congratulations. This evening after the board meeting, we will be heading over to the installation of city council members, Lester Friedman, Sharona, and also John Mirish. So we look forward to doing that right after this meeting. We're gonna head over and celebrate with our new city council members. Just a quick update. I know Mr. Halimi and some others have asked just a little bit of an update on where we are with the grandparent permits. And so that process is coming along, and as you can see, we have had about one hundred and sixteen applications total as of right now. We've already made some approvals, working with Laura Chisholm in Student Services, and Rebecca and Maria have done a lot of work on the permits. This is just giving you a number by elementary, middle, and high school, the number of permits that have been approved so far, just recently on July 8th. So you can see that we have forty-one elementary, ten middle school, and one high school. And so those approvals have gone out to some very, very happy families, fifty-two students in total. And we're working on kind of that second round now, and I'm really glad that we decided to do pending approval with round two. So we want to be really cognizant of the fact of what our class sizes are in the enrollment, and this is a great opportunity. Very happy that the board allowed us to put in a second round, which gives us the opportunity to assure that there are no additional costs that are coming in, but we also are respecting the community with move-ins that are coming in. And so we're being very, very conservative, and then we'll report back to you after July 18th, when we have an opportunity to make some further approvals with our permits. But it's a lot of work, probably a lot more than any of us anticipated, but we know that this will be a nice addition to our student body, to have our new students with us. And then finally, I just wanted to thank you for being here, Lamden. If you would please come down here. Lamden is retiring us, it was a bit of a surprise. And I said to Lamden earlier, just, you know, it's, you know, to lose Lamden is, you know, he absolutely did the work of more than two people all the time. And seeing Tim shake his hands, and, you know, and when you spring this on us this quickly, you know, it's like, it's a good reminder to us, because, you know, we love working with you, and you always go above and beyond, and you don't wait for situations, you jump in, and that's so helpful to us. I mean, you're quick on your feet, and, you know, you've been a great partner here at the high school. I know that you are going to be missed by so many people. I know you've got an exciting chapter ahead, but we did want to present you with a couple of things. So we have a gift certificate for you. I'm gonna hand you this.
All right. Thank you, wow.
And this, we have a beautiful vase that's in here, that's all for you, that's all nicely branded. So that is for you, and congratulations.
All right, thank you.
And did you want to say anything at all?
Just right here, I just like, I thank you for the board member, and thank you for Dr. Brighi, and thank you for the whole school recognizing me, so, you know, this is a time for me, happy. So, you know, this is a time for me happy. And I wish everybody happy. And I thank you for giving me a chance to work with the teachers. So I'm so happy for today.
Thank you for over 12 years of service.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah.
Why don't you come over here in the middle? There you go.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
And that's the best way to end a report with a celebration and to thank somebody for over 12 years of service.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Rochelle, did you have any comments?
I just want to congratulate him on his retirement. I never worked at the high school or was here at the high school then to observe him, but I can see how much he must have been loved and how grateful we were to have him here. And I just wanted to wish him very, very well in his retirement.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Bregge. Wanted to congratulate our students, especially the ones in KBEV, for being recognized on the national stage. That's that's pretty incredible. Congratulations to Lambden on his 12 years of service. Thank you. And really excited about, you know, hearing about so far the applications going out, applications coming in, acceptance letters going out for the grandparent permits. From what I've heard from the community anecdotally, it's gone really smoothly. And, you know, people are really excited. And I think it's going to be a great kind of like energy boost going into the next year. So thank you, Dr. Bregge.
Nothing further much to add, but thank you for your report. And I'm happy to hear about the grandparent permits as well. Thank you.
Lambden, I think I've known him since I got back to the district. And all I can tell is most kids leave like a kind of this path of dirt and destruction behind them. He's the opposite. Everywhere he goes, everything's clean and everything works. So everybody should take an example out of his book. And that's how you should leave a place. You want to leave it better than when you found it? Anywhere in your life, you want to leave a place better than when you found it. He's an example of that. Thank you, sir.
I just didn't take the opportunity to mention a few words about Dr. Bregge's report. I was just going to ask a couple of questions and make a comment. Of the ones that you have approved so far, they definitely know that they have a space coming in. Is that correct? And their applications are complete? Is that the way we look at it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. But I would like to say that I know that the real purpose, I mean, I was hoping that there would be a much greater number in the middle school and the high school, and I'm a little disappointed. I would have liked to have seen better numbers there.
You know, I think it'll be interesting. You know, I think, you know, next year, you know, when people have more time and, you know, this kind of works its way into our culture, that it'll be interesting to see if that data changes because it really didn't give a lot of people a lot of time. And so that wasn't on purpose. It was with everything that was happening. But I think that this was, this is a big decision for families. And I think that for middle school and high school students that have started programs and have invested in friendships, I think that that may have something to do with it. But I think that, you know, given some time now and going into future years, it'll be interesting to see if that changes.
Can I, can I just, can I just add something to that? I actually feel the reverse. I didn't think we were going to get that many applications. And I'll tell you why. I think so many of the families were already either on the private school track and have already paid their deposit for next year. Or they may already be on the public school track but are not sure whether, you know, how this is going to play out, whether they're going to be accepted year to year, whether they're going to be welcomed back. And so I think there's still a lot of questions. So I'm actually just happy to see how many applications came in. Got it.
Well, I'd like to thank Lambden for his service and congratulations. I really appreciate that. And as well, congratulations KBEV and to our culinary. I just am so impressed with our CTE program. It's just, it's so fantastic. And I encourage anybody and everybody to look into the program and the pathways because it's just such a phenomenal program and it only continues to get better and better. So certainly look into that. And yes, I'm excited about the grandparent permits. And thank you for the hard work to the staff for getting this together in short order and all the extra work, Laura, for making this happen. I know that that was a lot and for Dustin as well. I mean, to everybody.
Rebecca.
Rebecca, always Rebecca. But all of the staff, it just, it was a lot of work to really think through the grandparent permit program. And I think we really did a great job thinking it through at the best that we could at this point. And then as well to turn around and get it done in time for this fall. I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Yeah, and we're just really thankful too. Like, this was a really good example of us, you know, kind of working through an initiative like this in public, which is always, you know, it's difficult oftentimes to do that. But I think that the board input that we got, especially with Mr. Halimi and his experiences, has made this a much better experience for anybody that has gone through the permit process before. So I think that that has a lot to do with where we're going and how this is going to work in the future. And I think it's better than it's ever been.
That's great news. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is meeting reports from board members. I'm happy to start. This, since our last board meeting on June 30th, I had a conference, a Zoom meeting actually with Beverly Hills Next, our Next Beverly Hills. And it was really a follow-up from a conversation that started when we had the spotlight where one of the parents spoke about the multicultural project that was 50 years ago. And this year is the 50th anniversary for that. And they are really starting to coalesce the ideas for doing a 50th anniversary celebration with that first class that was part of the multicultural integration program for here at the district and specifically at the high school. And as a follow-up to that, they're going to be at our planning session and they're going to come to the planning session and present what their idea is. And it's a, it's a very, it's a collaborative effort with Human Relations Commission, Arts and Culture, and with us as well and the city to make this a really big event. So I think it's, it's going to be a really fantastic event and something we can all be really proud of. The other thing that I attended via Zoom on July 7th, Wade hosted a meet and greet, or I'd say like a team meeting for the new construction, the construction group, the new construction group. And everybody was on that. Fonder Solari was on that meeting as well as DLR, the architects, the engineers, Pro West, all of the construction team where they got a chance to introduce themselves. And they, as a result of that, Fonder Solari is doing walkthroughs this week and they happened to be here today. So I'm happy to say hello to them and introduce them. Sean Fonder and Alicia Fonder and Amin Solari, welcome to our meeting today and welcome to our district. It's really nice to have you. And then the last thing is yesterday, June 11th, Moss Adams did a kickoff meeting for the audit, for the construction audit. And Gabe Halimi and I attended that with Wade and Moss Adams. And that's, they'll be getting back to us. I think it's, Wade can correct me, but I think they said six to eight weeks. So we can expect to see something then.
Well, since I was away on vacation and having a wonderful time in Minnesota, I couldn't get a chance to attend too many meetings. I did attend, I believe, the Facilities and Construction Committee meeting. And not too much to report because they don't have too much to say at this point. But I did attend the meeting. And I'll be coming back with more in the future because I do attend the meetings. So.
Not to disappoint, I have attended every Human Relations Commission meeting. We just started the notion of sharing the reports, which is a great one. The next one will be July 21st, and unfortunately I will be very far away. But I might very well attend in these Zoom times. I do find a way to go. So stay tuned.
Okay, thanks, everyone. The next item on our agenda is Business and Finance. Mr. Roach.
Good afternoon, President Wells, members of the board. Item 10A, ratification of pre-construction services for South Site and retaining walls number two, three, four, and five. Pursuant to pre-construction services, design and engineering services, and a design licensing fee, Pro West Constructors is requesting payment for work completed under amendments from April 14th, '21, and earlier amendment from dated 12th to 20th for design bill procurement for the South Site retaining walls. These services have been completed. Board action is required to properly account for the expenses in the 21, '22 fiscal year. Staff recommends the ratification and payment for pre-construction services performed on behalf of the district for Beverly Hills High School's South Site and retaining walls two, three, four, and five.
President Wells, can I make a motion for the ratification of pre-construction services for South Site and retaining walls number two, three, four, and five?
Do I have a second?
I have a question. Well, I'll make a second and then I have questions.
Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus.
The question that I have on this is that we are being asked to pay for services that have been completed correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
So why are we then recommending and paying for pre-construction services on behalf of, for wall two, three, four, and five? I'm confused by the fact that there are some walls, some of it's completed and some isn't. And that's what I'm trying to figure. How much has been completed? Does that $818,000 represent completed? Or is that all of it or part of it?
Yes, Trustee Marcus, this was the pre-construction work? Getting these drawings, working with the architects, getting them into DSA, working with the engineers, reworking the plans, getting the plans ready so that the board in the future can either decide to do a lease leaseback or actually send them out for a bid process? So this is all for pre-construction work, not the actual construction work?
But the services have been completed, correct?
Yeah, those types of services have been completed, correct, Ms. Marcus?
My question is, and actually my recommendation would be to table this item and actually have Fonder Solari look at it now that they're coming on board. This was an item that was part of that amendment, was on Amendment 11. And I believe it's actually part of Amendment eight or seven?
Seven.
I think it's seven. And so I'm not really clear on what parts of these are part of seven and was going to be added into 11. I think it's more complicated than what we're seeing. And I would rather, now that we have Fonder Solari coming on, that we table this and allow them to look at it and then bring it back to us. Because I don't think we have the information that we need to make an informed decision on this.
Well, I would respectfully disagree. We approved this amendment a while ago and we understood the scope of work in this amendment. This is only for the architecture, engineering, and the pre-construction services of the retaining wall. We're not committing ourselves to build any wall at this point. But the work has been done and we did approve the work to be done. I don't think it will be proper for us not to pay for the work that we approved to be done.
But this is outside of the amendment. Isn't that correct?
This is work that has been completed that was beyond the originally approved amendment.
Right. So it's not part of that amendment. It may be a change order.
But we approved the work though.
You did approve the work.
Right. Who, this, I mean, I just, as a ratification for the board, I don't, it sounds like it's more of a change order to me. But I just don't think that we have this, all this information.
President Wells, members of the board, this is both a payment issue and an accounting issue. These expenses were incurred in 21, '22. So the board needs to take some form of action. You don't necessarily have to make the payment now, but you have to approve so that I can account for it as a legitimate expense in 21, '22 as I close the books.
So what happens if we don't approve it?
If you don't approve it, I don't have the backup to account for it in 21, '22. So most likely when the auditors, when you eventually make the payment, and we'll make a payment out of 22, '23, there'll be an audit adjustment to show that it was actually a 21, '22 expense. So you would have an audit adjustment.
Okay. At this point, sorry if I'm speaking out of turn. At this point, I would, I agree with my colleague, President Wells. We talked about this at the last board meeting. My preference would be now that we have Fonder Solari here, for them to, you know, weigh in on all of these, you know, matters that come before the board before we take action. And now that we're here, that would be my preference to have them opine and make a recommendation before we proceed. So if it's just a matter of making an audit adjustment later, my preference would just be to pause, table it, and come back to it after our, to bond manager has a chance to look at it.
What sort of a timeframe would that be or would you recommend? If we were to table it and come back to it?
When they're able to, when they're able to look at it. But I, we don't have the information that we need to make that decision. Does anyone have any other comments?
Well, I agree with Mr. Halimi about the fact that if it's only a requirement of the, just an adjustment in the books for a short period of time, I don't see why we have to actually make this decision tonight and wait until we do see the new Fonder Solari coming in and taking an issue and being able to share with us this. I understand that this is all work that's been done. But it's only a matter of bookkeeping, I think, that's part of it, as far as I can tell.
Just another disappointing information for the board, President Wells and the board. The original process would have been when the next amendment was approved and the walls were started, you would make this payment at that time. But because we've delayed starting that wall, that's why there's a delay here.
Right.
There's also one other part of this $818,000 bill is actually a pass-through. Where we hired a design firm that we've actually paid. So Pro West is out that money that they paid that design firm. So that's a pass-through that is part of this $818,000.
How much is that pass-through?
I think it's $150,000.
I think so. I can tell you for sure. Excuse me. Don't laugh.
I think actually, there was a license fee, which we're not acting on right now.
$150,000.
Yeah. So, I mean, I would be fine to make an amendment to approve that portion of it and then allow Fonder Solari to review the other expenses and see where they should go because we just don't have the information for the rest of that. I would make the.
Is that for, is that for that third bullet under fees, the DG, the DJ?
I'm sorry. Wait, is that for that third bullet under fees?
The DG, the DJ?
I would approve the pass-through fees and allow Fonder Solari to look at the remainder and see where it should go.
I would be, I would be fine with that as well.
Okay. So, and now I forgot, who made the motion?
Me.
Okay. Can you, I would.
You want to make a friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And you need me a second to agree with that?
Yeah, like, let him make an amendment first. It's too.
No, no, I'll accept your, I'll have to do this accepted. I don't have to make it.
So it'll be a motion to approve only the pass-through portion?
Which is $150,000.
Yes. And you second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10B. Approval of contract with Fonder Solari for Bond Construction Management Services. Item 10B, Approval of Contract with Fonder Solari for Bond Construction Management Services. On July 17th, 2022, the current BHUSD agreement with Team Content Development Services for Bond Management Services expires. On June 28th, 2022, the board awarded the Request for Proposal for Bond Construction Management Services to Fonder Solari Incorporated. Staff was directed to draft an agreement with Fonder Solari for future board review and approval. Staff recommends the approval of the agreement with Fonder Solari for Bond Construction Management Services. We have made some updates since the agreement was attached to the agenda, so I'm going to pull that up and share that with the board right now, if that's okay. Am I good? I'm good? So in Article Three, you see here 3.2, we've added a sentence. We want to give the Fonder Solari team some time to get in and actually get a better feel for all of our different projects. So we've added this sentence, "The assigned personnel will be brought to the district for approval within 60 days of the execution of this contract." So, we're going to have the actual staff listed here, and you have some of the positions listed. Continuing on down, no other changes in the body of the agreement until we get to Exhibit C. Once again, the scheduled work and staffing, we want to give Fonder Solari some time here to get in and create those staffing plans and project plans. And then finally, here in the fee schedule, we're going to give Fonder Solari some time to develop the actual not-to-exceed fee. However, please note that this is really a time and materials contract based on the approved hourly rates that you see just after this section. But we needed to give them a little bit of money to get started until we get everything set up. So in this, we have an onboarding fee of $500,000 that should take us through the end of September. And those are the only substantive changes to the contract that you've already seen.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of Fonder Solari?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the contract with Fonder Solari, Inc. for Bond Construction Management Services.
I will second it.
Motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Any other discussion?
You guys have anything?
All I just wanted to say is to thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you and your team. Well, not directly, but I'm looking forward to seeing you guys at the board meetings and hopefully getting some great updates. And I just wanted to thank again the administration for the, you know, RFP process, working through this contract, having now looked at the contract and comparing it to what we had before. We've made a number of big changes that felt like, you know, a thorn in the side earlier. I appreciate the structure, I appreciate the terms, just comparing some of the rates that we were paying for some of the different positions. I think we've done well here for the school district and the taxpayers. The proof will be in the pudding, it'll be in the execution, obviously, but I'm feeling really good about where we are. So, thank you.
I wanted to make one additional comment, having met the company that's here this evening. I have a great deal of confidence that this is going to be a very great collaboration, and I think we're going to enjoy working with them. So, I want to welcome you and tell you I'm looking forward to it.
Fonder Solari, welcome. Very, very happy to meet you tonight and see you. And I know that with Exhibit C, we'll have, you know, a schedule of work that will make sense mutually. And as you guys may well be aware, a lot of our, a lot of the feedback from parents is that they don't want their kids anymore, you know, in construction during their schooling career than they have to be. So, I know you know that, but, you know, just to say, we really are looking forward to effective and quality and timely work. So, thank you.
Wade, in 3.2, we had changed it from 30 days to 60 days regarding the personnel. What happens if we don't have a list in 60 days, or we don't have a, is there, what was the?
Yeah, in speaking with Fonder Solari, they actually think that 60 days is plenty of time, that they, their goal is to actually beat that timeframe and come in sooner than that. So, I'm confident that they're going to be able to do that and get this information back to the board sooner than the 60 days.
Okay. All right. People know how I felt about this whole process. That all being said, I do wish our new firm the best. It's important that they succeed, because their success will translate to the district. So, for that, whatever's happened in the past has happened, and I think that we do have a very successful program here that you're stepping into, and hopefully we can make the adjustments that people seem to think are necessary and get these buildings completed. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other further comments, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five-zero. Welcome, Fonder Solari.
Yes, thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the contract for Sandy Pringle Associates Incorporated for DSA Inspector of Records Services.
I'll second, or Mandy can second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Dr. Stern. Any comments?
I have one. Does anybody have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Colleagues, I think this is really important. I'll try my best here. We have one of the better DSA inspectors in the state on our job presently. I understand the format for keeping him in place is shifting, but it doesn't mean we need to lose him. So I am imploring, with this board's blessing, to ask Sandy Pringle to keep Mike Barbera on the job. We have a huge transition coming right now. We know it, they know it, they know it. It is, we can work out things later on when things, when the dust settles, but for right now, to keep our projects moving, we should maintain our current DSA inspector through Sandy Pringle. So I would like, if I can, to make a friendly amendment that upon approval, we give direction for Sandy Pringle to engage Mike Barbera to keep him on our sites.
I would love to have that. I think it's very important for the job. As long as Mike is willing to do something like that, that would be great. If the board is accepting that.
I, are you finished, Noah?
I'm finished.
I think that we interviewed, we had an RFQ process, we had multiple responses to the RFQ process, we had many qualified responses. I think that our, our staff vetted those RFQ responses and narrowed it down and presented Sandy Pringle to the board as their recommended inspector of record. I think that we all have recognized that we need a fresh start, and Mike Barbera did not put in for an RFQ with any of these firms, and we all identified that we wanted to have a fresh start. So I think at this stage, we already made that decision. We met with Doug Humphries with DSA, he felt it was a very good move that we were making, and I completely support the direction that we're moving as a fresh start. And, and we can't direct to Pringle that they should hire Mike Barbera. So, I don't want to mix the past with our present. We're starting with a fresh start. I think everybody has that attitude about starting with a fresh start, and we have very qualified inspector of records that we are hiring.
Gary is from Sandy Pringle, and he did not scoff at this suggestion, so.
But what I would say about that is that I'm not going to have Gary, with all due respect to Gary or anyone at Sandy Pringle, come back to us six months from now or a year from now and say, "You gave us direction on who to hire, this is on you." No, 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 no. We went through an RFQ process, as Ms. Wells just shared, for whatever reason, we got whatever RFQs we got, we didn't get RFQs that we didn't get, we've decided to go with Sandy Pringle. Whoever Sandy Pringle decides to hire at this point is up to Sandy Pringle. I'm not going to, I'm not comfortable giving direction to say that Sandy Pringle should hire any, any one person. I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable with us doing that as a board.
But we can choose who of Sandy Pringle that, that we want to be working on our job.
Well, DSA kind of chooses that.
But we have a say in who we want to have working on our job, and we determined that we wanted to have a fresh start.
Well, you determined that. I think that would be detrimental to the stage of construction right now. I have, I have to, I've been around long enough, I have to say, to change out our DSA inspector when we're changing out our management program is a very risky move. You guys want to take it? I absolutely respect that, but all I can do is speak my mind and say, "It would be much more secure for the program's success if we keep Mike Barbera on in some way." And I can't tell Sandy Pringle what to do, but I got to ask the board in the amendment to say, "Please try to keep Mike Barbera on."
I understand.
I understand what you're saying about a fresh start, but the buildings aren't new, the plans aren't new, the engineering isn't new, DSA isn't new. None of those are fresh. There's a, there's a time where we can play politics and stuff, but this is not that time, guys. This is the actual DSA inspector. This stuff is beyond our scope now.
Okay.
So in order to maintain the program-
I would like to speak when you're finished.
Apparently, I'm done. Go ahead.
When you're, when you're finished.
No, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, Noah, we identified with Mike Barbera that wasn't a, it wasn't, he worked for Nolan Construction, he left and went and worked for John Blake. He was working for the construction manager, which was identified and to ourselves that that was not the ideal, or the cleanest way for that to be, set up for that to be. Those were the decisions that he made. Doug Humphries even said to us that we were cleaning up our program, and I, you know, I think that we are better off starting with a fresh inspector of record. I think we all agreed to that.
So I think, I think, but this is not really what's in front of the board tonight. What's in front of the board tonight is an approval of a contract with Sandy Pringle. As far as I'm concerned, if Sandy Pringle comes back in the future and the DSA inspector that they decide to put in front of us is Mike Barbera, then we have a decision to make at that point on whether or not we're going to approve it. Sitting here tonight, I'm not going to vote for giving Sandy Pringle direction on who to hire. I am in favor of approving this contract with Sandy Pringle, and if in the future we have a situation where we're having to decide whether or not we want to work with Mike Barbera or not, we can have that conversation at that time.
Right.
As far as, but I'm concerned.
I believe that was also my thought that I just mentioned to Mr. Halimi, that we're hiring Sandy Pringle, and if they decide to hire Mike Barbera, that's a situation that can come later, but right now, that's not the decision we're making. We're deciding to hire Sandy Pringle. So that's why, well, I can't tell them who to hire right now.
All right, I agree. I have a question for you, Wade. Were you approached by Sandy Pringle about them coming to the meeting tonight and having this conversation?
Yeah, we, we invited Sandy Pringle to be available for the approval of the contract.
For, right, but with regards to Mike Barbera?
Uh, no.
So this is the first that you're hearing about it?
We didn't talk about them speaking to any particular inspector this evening.
Right, because the message that we received previously was the opposite of that.
Can we just, can we just call the question on this contract? Because I think that's what we have in front of us tonight.
Right, I'm, I'm just, I'm questioning how this came about this evening. Right.
I brought it up, and Mike is very well-established. That's, I guess, why Gary answered the way, I don't know Gary, by the way. That's why Gary answered the way he did, because in the course of public construction in California, Mike is very high-regarded. So, we happen to have somebody that we should maintain, and that's why I brought it up, just because I, for the history of the program here. But, go ahead, call the question.
All right, I'll call for the question.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero.
Gary, we're, we are, I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Letting us join your team.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to stop for one second. We just called for the question to approve the contract without the amendment?
Yeah, nobody accepted.
Nobody accepted the amendment.
I just want to be clear that we did not accept the amendment. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Board Policies, the 6,000 Series, and that's, Dustin.
I don't have ultimately a presentation. I think it's really up for you guys' discussion. In front of you guys, obviously, a lot of people have binders, but it's also posted online. There's recommendations made by not only BHUSD, any of the board policies that had not been adopted or touched since 2009, since the last time we did a full vet, we brought those back, CSBA recommendations. And then in addition, you'll see that there are some of the CSBA recommendations that we also wanted to update. So they're coordinated in three different sections, and so I'll kind of leave that there for you guys and open it up for discussion.
Terrific. I think the best way to do it is to maybe just go, we'll just go around with each person's question, and we can just work through the questions that everybody has. I have a feeling we may not get through all questions this evening, because we want to be able to attend the city council installation this evening, but I would suggest we work till maybe 6:30, and then that allows us to do board comments at the end. And does everybody agree that we continue with the discussion if it takes that long?
Sure.
Yes.
So, we can just take turns with questions. So, Michelle, I'll start with you, and you can ask your first question on whichever board policy you have.
The only thing that I'm concerned about right now is the way that it's put into the book and formatting it so that it is consistent. And I, I find that, I've got questions as we go along. The, I've pretty much gone through it all. There was one section that I would have to find, 615, I didn't know if you wanted to go that far through it, or whether you would rather just-
I think you should just take whichever policies you have questions, like-
Okay, right now, I have a question on 6151, about the K3 and 4-5, the classes. 6151 was one that I picked out.
Class size?
6151.
Is it a policy?
Six, I'm not sure if it's a policy or, but it'll be right next-
It says it to the left of the number.
60, 615-
It is a policy.
What's your question, Michelle?
Okay, the question had to do with the fact that there was no listing, as far as I could see, about the size of the fourth and fifth grade classes.
Yep, and, and so, just for clarification, too, to be able to assist, you'll also notice in this policy that the original adoption date was in 2016. And so to kind of start the conversation over again, the majority of our board policies had not been updated since 2009. And that was part of why we, as a cabinet, had went through and started to vet and change and make the CSBA recommendations. Any board policy that had been amended or voted on by the, you know, current or former board member, so in 2016, that was when this was last adopted. So this isn't a new change or new recommendation, this is a current policy that the BHUSD has changed from what the state recommends or state code.
Okay, well, all I'm saying is that it's a policy, and you talk about the sizes and the percentages of class teachers and so on, and you talk about 23 students and so on. You do not mention in here at all the fourth and fifth grade, and I think that that should be somewhere in the policy.
We're only tied for our CBA to the 23 to 1 in the early elementaries. We're not tied to the 29. That's our recommendation in practice, it's not part of the actual agreement. So that, that's why that's not in that policy.
So there's no CSBA policy, but are you saying it's the recommendation of the administration to just not have an overt policy on fourth and fifth grade?
That's up to you guys. So, for us, we have never negotiated that with our collective bargaining unit. What we have- What we have negotiated with our collective bargaining unit is the twenty-three in the early elementary. And so if you guys would like to set a class, um, size limit.
So, so what is it in practice for fourth and fifth grade today?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine from fourth grade to pretty much twelfth grade. So we do twenty-three, twenty-nine and then TK is obviously changed due to the new, um, state law.
I found it better, Gabe, for us, um, to leave things in practice and practice and not memorialize them in a policy because it ties our hands. If there's issues and we need to pivot, then we're, we're tied down and we don't have the, as much flexibility, correct me if I'm wrong, guys. Um, yes, I'm getting thumbs up all over.
Well, the only reason that I, the only reason that I say that is because we do have that number for K to two and three. I think we should be consistent and we should maybe set an adoption on that, uh, adopt a policy on that. And we can do that at another time if you want, but I think that we should be consistent. I mean, we're, we're saying twenty-three for, for second and third graders, we should have a policy, have a number.
Right, because it's in our, it's in our collective bargaining agreement.
Well, it's in the collective bargaining, but it should be in the policy then. I mean, I think that that.
No, 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 the, the K through, the TK through three is in the policy because, because it's in our collective bargaining.
I believe there's also something with the fourth and fifth grade on the other issue too.
My understanding is that prac, that's practice.
Practice versus policy.
It's practice and it's flexible.
Well, you know, we don't have a policy. I, I hear teachers telling me that that twenty-nine is their limit, so I mean.
Yep, but our, our, yeah, through practice, our only current policy, um, set in 2016, that was when it was last changed and adopted, only addressed early education, the foundational grade levels, um, and four, five was not there. And then by practice internally and both with, uh, uh, collaboration with our union members, we typically keep the majority of our class sizes under twenty-nine. However, one thing that you wanna consider, and again, I know we're talking about four, five, but a, a typical certificated teacher can only see a hundred and forty-five students. So when you do the math, if they teach five sections in grade six through twelfth grade, you're already under about twenty-nine students per section anyway. So that, that kinda dictates that twenty-nine to one without having it in the policy outside of fourth and fifth. Fourth and fifth, like Mrs. Marcus is stating, that's the only grade band that really isn't protected in other language and other practices.
So what if we were to make a cap though and say, we realize that it fluctuates or is open, subject to change, but the recommendation is, um, and the goal is twenty-nine, uh, ratio twenty-nine to one?
Yep, that's absolutely, I mean, we can absolutely make that amendment to this, uh, board policy.
I mean, you know, there's some other districts where there's thirty-four, thirty-five.
Correct.
And it's so big that the teacher hardly knows all the kids.
Yeah, just next door.
Yeah, it's a sad state there. So I mean, I'd be in, I'd be in favor of putting something that gives us some parameters to ensure that, um, teacher-student ratio remains relatively small.
Don't you agree, Rochelle, with that?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
So you're saying that would mean you have to negotiate further with the bargaining units for the board?
Nope, this is, nope, this is your board policy. And so the reason the twenty-three had come out from previous years, there is conversation, and I, I, I wasn't here, I got here in 2017. But I believe the previous, uh, are, uh, was around the way that the salary schedule was tied to, um, I can't remember what that salary schedule, uh, formula was called. And so that was part of that was to get down to the twenty-three in the early foundationals. But that was set by that board in 2016 and so absolutely you guys have the right to make different recommendations for us to bring back for your first reading, second reading and approval.
I'll give some of my colleagues a chance to address some of the others and I'll take my, I'll take the last. I just wanna make one more comment. This is a comment, I remember back when I first came to the district, uh, back in nineteen sixty-three, uh, the physical education and activity. And I remember at that time that I had the girls, all the girls were mine, all the boys were friends. And that no longer exists and it was about the time that I dropped out of physical education as a teacher was exactly at the time that that was going to happen. And I was thrilled that I didn't have to teach boys and girls in the same class because of the, the skill levels. And I still to this day feel that way and there's nothing I can do about it, but, uh, I just wanted to make that comment. And the only other issue that I have with the whole booklet, other than I'm pretty much in agreement with a lot of this stuff, although I did go through it and I have three pages of notes or some things. I would like to, uh, note it that there is no grandparent policy injured yet as of now, since I think I saw it in that, is that correct?
So you're absolutely correct. It, it takes a while, um, to be uploaded through Symbly and, um, so we're just, it's a, I just was speaking to Ms. Chisholm about that earlier today. It's, it's just a process, um, you know, phase of this implementation.
I, I, I just wanted to make that comment and I will have other comments coming later about the formatting and I, that's about it for now.
Can I just give a little bit of input because, uh, we managed the, the class numbers? One thing I just want the board to take into consideration, here's me and this mic again. I know, but I don't wanna mess it up for Dustin. Cause he's so much shorter than I. Um, for scheduling, just two things I want you to take in mind, with the average, it's, it's good to have that flexibility because you have two issues going with scheduling. Number one, sometimes you have singletons and that drives the schedule. And sometimes that's the only class that we can schedule kids in and we might have thirty. If we put a hard number in here, we can't go over that number. One, it's one section of one class, like AP science. It's only, it's only taught one period a day and we have to schedule all tenth graders in there. And so that, that singleton drives that schedule. And sometimes we have to have the flexibility to put thirty-two kids in there, but overall, the teacher is seeing one hundred and forty-five students or less throughout the full day.
But we were talking about home, we were.
Yeah, fourth and fifth grade specifically.
Yeah, they're only, they're only.
But, but when we get into some other things that we're doing with our SEL program and stuff, we're gonna look at probably having some curriculum there and that will still start counting. So I want us to keep that in mind. So just, just food for thought. Thank you.
Are we going around?
Oh, uh, yeah, sure. I'll do one. I have, I have a few. If we can look at policy six, one, forty-two point one, sexual health and HIV AIDS prevention instruction. I just, you know, a month ago or whatever it was, we were dealing with a bunch of questions from our community around, parent involvement in the curriculum. I see it documented in the policy, um, that, you know, parents, parent guardian may request in writing that his or child be excused from participating. And I think it's in the next section as well. At the very end of this, on page thirty-two, there's also a parent guardian notification part. My suggestion would be that we be a little bit more explicit because I think we saw that the way that this policy was followed in practice, uh, was not really up to par with, uh, but community standards or parent expectations. So I think my ask would be that at least thirty days before the instruction begins, that we just send the curriculum to all the parents and give them the opportunity to review it. Don't wait for the parents to request, just, you know, give parents a chance to review the content that their, um, kids are gonna receive. And then give the parents an opportunity to opt out, have, you know, opt their kids out of specific instruction that they may not want their kids to, uh, receive. That would be, uh, that'd be my suggestion, but I actually wanted to talk to the board that has some experience with this as well and kinda pick everyone's brain. I just, I wanna get, I wanna make sure that we're getting the right communication out far enough ahead of time so we avoid having any kinda confrontation, uh, or, you know, allegation in the future. I just wanna sidestep any controversy in the future. So, um, I just wanted to have a conversation about that.
I think it's a good idea, um, for some consistency. The, um, that would be an AR, right?
Yep.
Yeah, administrative regulation. So it would, it would be developed in, in, uh, coinciding with the policy and then you develop an AR to actually say how you're gonna execute it.
Okay.
Right, so that's kinda what you're looking for, Gabe, right? How, like, we're gonna say, we're gonna notify parents. So the AR is gonna say how we're gonna do it, right?
But that's in, uh, Mr. Margot, I apologize. So that's the sixty-one, forty-two, one, and that would be the regulation. Mr. Halimi, that, that would be the, that's where you would possibly make the recommendation of a, like a thirty-day timeline. Unfortunately, with the opt-out of sections, that is ed code and that was part of the AALR, uh, AARL. LCU, sorry, ACLU, sorry, my bad, that was.
You started quoting the law firm there.
Totally, I'm like, but they also, they also had, uh, provided, uh, um, governance over our, uh, communication. And they, uh, state law does not allow you either opt in or opt out of the program. You cannot be selective in the topics and what you want your student to receive.
Okay, so that in and of itself, we weren't up a consistent on in communicating with our parents. Cause I remember when parents were here, we said we gave them the option, I think, to opt out of certain parts, but we're saying that's not accurate. So it's either, it's all in or all out, is what we're saying?
Yeah, we, we, we sent them the actual, um, ACLU documentation of that if you are opting in, you're opting into the full program. You cannot opt in to days, minutes, topics. Um, and we did send that out to, via Parentsware, to all of our parents.
And that specifically is, uh, but ed code that they can't opt in or out of any specific part? It's all in?
Correct. If we are electing to be able to deliver this instruction, it is an all-in or an all-out program. And so you can't cherry pick, and that's what would prevent us from just saying, we're only gonna cover men's reproduction, reproductive system versus, um, it has to be inclusive of sexual orientation, gender identity, to, uh, we need to discuss female anatomy, um, everything. So either, it's an either or and that's something that the board can determine is in 2016. So it was actually adopted in BHUSD in 2009 and I still actually have the full, there was a full-blown parent committee curriculum. Everybody, um, even one of the UCLA professors who's still there was on the original committee. I have the binders and CDs and stuff. But when that was adopted in oh nine or oh, or oh eight, um, and, and you, the Board of Education, then you'll see also revamped this policy in 2016. Um, and so again, back to the Board of Education, if that was the direction in which you wanted to provide us the staff, to be able to, we, we no longer want to provide fifth grade human growth and development, we would have to remove this completely and we wouldn't be able to cover any of those by piecemeal.
Can I add to that too, as just someone who, you know, has some experience with running, you know, groups with kids of all ages, um, and, and dealing with parents? If we do, if we were to permit, you know, let's say cherry picking certain topics and, you know, certain themes that, that some parents like and some don't, it becomes an administrative nightmare and for teachers too, because, you know, you have a very stressed out teacher, let's say, or administrator who is trying to deal with sensitive, um, subject matter and then they have to remember, oh, well, wait, those three students aren't, have to leave the room because we're talking about this theme, but in fact, they're all sort of integrated. So, um, I think the idea is, the governing, um, principle is that they want sexual and health, um, education to be integrative. So it's not just about biology, it's not just about psychology, it's, it's a mixture of things. And so to slice and dice it is not only difficult logistically with getting certain kids in, certain kids out, but it also destroys the sentiment of making it sort of a holistic, um, curriculum experience. That said, of course, parents should be able to opt out if that doesn't, you know, if that's not what they want. But I think it makes sense from the ed code standpoint that it's either sort of all in or, or all out.
And, and the opportunity for parents, guardians to opt out their kids, that is also ed code, right?
Totally. And that's something, since we've been here, have, we've always followed in prior to this administration. You know, there are still, we keep a lot of records for seven years. What's up? Yeah, and it is technically only opt out.
Only opt out, right, yeah.
I mean, you're called default, you're in.
Yeah, but we, we took it a step further, just as a practice of making sure that parents were clicking yes or no, instead of just saying, well, I read this, it's fine. We wanted a response regardless from each parent.
I think that's a great practice, like, okay.
Well, if they did opt out, where, where would you house those kids? Just curious.
Uh, so there's a variety. Some of the families chose to keep their students home during that time. Um, and that's why when we were scheduling it, it was typically at the end of the school day. So some of those students were being picked up or taken. The others, uh, depending on if they were still on campus, there are other activities that were educational based. So they were doing some support, say in math or in English, depending on who the student was and what level of support they may have needed in a certain subject area. So they were pulled out into a different classroom.
So there's meaningful things for them to do, should they opt out?
Correct. It wasn't, we didn't send them out to the playground and they weren't playing, you know. So we were keeping them in an educational environment and providing them educational opportunities.
So to Mr. Margot's point, is there a separate, um, regulation on this topic? Like of parent notification or is it just what we have on page thirty-two?
Uh, just what you have on page, uh, thirty, yeah, so it basically starts at twenty-nine.
Yep.
And then runs to, your, your policy actually is only on page twenty-nine. That basically lists, and that was adopted to in 2016. And then in, um, twenty, twenty-nine to thirty, uh, two is your actual regulation.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess, I guess my suggestion would be to just make sure that we're sending out the materials thirty days in advance. I guess, to the rest of it is just ed code.
Yep.
You know, I have some things to say, but I sort of feel like in the interest of time, since we're gonna revisit, right? We are, we're certainly not done with this. I would rather not sort of consolidate everything into, you know, a ten or twenty minute. Is that okay? We are going to return to this discussion in the next. Okay. I had a suggestion, but, uh, I, I can just be very short with my thoughts because I think it's a much larger discussion. In the, now, when is the, actually a pink ditto or sheet, what does that indicate? That it's a draft, correct? If it's, if pink, not in pink highlight, but just a pink, um, colored paper, that is a draft that is, we're looking at.
And so the pink is actually where the ed code, our previous was again adopted in 2009 and the language doesn't necessarily change, but it allows us to put in the new CSBA document. So it's basically CSBA saying, this is the new up and coming version, but it's no, it's not significantly different than our 2009, it's just bringing us up to speed, saying, we have looked at this in 2022, um, and it still stands, it's still ed code. So that we haven't made any interior, internal, um, changes to it or made it, you know, as a governing board, we can make it, uh, a bit smaller and we have not.
Well, I'm gonna say that, um, you know, since two thousand nine or since, you know, that, even since CSBA, um, made some changes or came out with the draft, the pandemic and the level of, um, mental health issues has, is significantly different, such that, that the section concerning, uh, personal or mental health counseling or crisis counseling, so I am looking at, let's see.
It'll say, um, up on the top left corner?
It, it doesn't, cause I think this is like the page two of it, but maybe it's under guidance counseling services, six, one, six, four, point two. Could that be? And then it carries on to, to a subheading of personal or mental health counseling and then crisis counseling.
Are you at six, one, six, four?
Six, one, six, four, and then I think.
What page is that?
Six, one, six, four, point two.
Yeah.
Six, one, six, one, four, it's six, one, six, four, point two, guidance counselor and counseling services.
It doesn't have a page number apparently, but it's a pink page.
Six, one, six, four, point two, guidance counseling services.
Right, but the actual page I'm referring to, I guess, is just a part of that, but doesn't, doesn't have.
It's right, it's right before one sixty-two.
It's the pink, it's the pink policy, six, one, six, four, two, point two.
It's the pink page right before one sixty-two.
Yep, and so, uh, this is a great example, just again, kinda reminding how we utilize the binders. On the right-hand side is our current, so you'll see that we haven't touched or looked at this since twenty oh nine. And then the reason the pink is flipped that way is so you can look at them side by side.
I got it, that's right, you did say that.
So the new recommendation, yeah, sorry.
It's the pink.
It's okay.
Yep, it's the pink.
So Rochelle, you see where I am here, I.
No, I, I knew where you were.
I didn't know where I was, okay. So if I could just say, um, I think that, um, it's a, it's the consensus that things have changed radically since, um, pandemic and also just the outrageous amounts of, um, gun violence and things like that. I know from a recent study, and there's a book actually, that I. I know from a recent study, and there's a book, actually, that I intend to buy, it's called Trigger Points, which just goes through and basically makes the, the conclusion that some of these violent outbursts are not in fact, of children or teens, are not in fact just coming out of nowhere, there were no signs, not true. So now that we know that, and if we accept that assumption, I think it's reasonable that when it is a brief mentioning here, I'm looking at crisis counseling, okay?
Yep.
I think it is an absolutely reasonable and prudent thing to do, is that at the last point here, it says Early Identification and Intervention.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so my suggestion would be to say that furthermore, that identification of such students may include, but is not limited to, district technology and electronic communication in accordance with Educo, Education Code four-nine-oh-seven-three-point-six. And I list the one that references our, our district use, district technology use, so that it ties in and is legally sound, although I'm no lawyer. But my point is that some of the prevailing wisdom now is that it doesn't just come out of nowhere. There are signs, and very often, it is from a standpoint of social media and posts and things that, that should have or could have discovered. I just would feel, I feel comfortable knowing that part of the identification during crisis counseling, piggybacking on this notion, is that, and I can give you my wording if you like it, or you can change it, but just that it, it may include, but is not limited to the technological resources. And that's really been a change. And it's almost, almost ubiquitous in some of these incidents of rampage, so. I have some other thoughts, but I will save them for our continued.
Okay.
That's great.
Um, I'll just add on two for you. It's actually one, it's six-one four-two point eight, and it's kind of dovetails on to Mandy's, but it's much more brief. Six-one four-two point eight, it's Comprehensive Health Education. And it's the regulation. Six-one four-two point eight, the regulation for Comprehensive Health Education.
Yep.
So just on point number two, where it says Mental and Emotional Health and Development, I might be more specific based on how things are now and just say suicide prevention, anxiety, and depression. Like, I would add those three things into that. And how you want to word it is what's appropriate for you. But I just think we need to be more, we need to specifically be talking about those three things. Does anyone have anything else to add about that one?
Not about that one, but I had.
I, I'll say one more thing about mental health, sorry, we, we just never know. If I could just add to it.
And about this policy specifically?
Uh, I think so, yes.
It's six-one four-two point eight.
Well, it's, I have a more global thought, and that is that a lot of our mental health counselors in schools are not clinical psychologists. And right now, there is some risk in the sense that sometimes some of the cases are so acute, even in little bitty kids, seven, eight-year-olds, where for them to get the best treatment can very well often be in the province of not school-based counseling, but clinical psychology. I would really like some sort of clarification in the board policies that say, you know, there will be, every effort to refer or connect with, you know, like the Maple Counseling Center, will be encouraged and properly vetted. And I just wish that there could be some clarification here that, that makes a distinction between what the mental health counselors in the non-special ed branch, and then the school psychologist and the other folks can and cannot do. Because why, whereas we've seen a lot of kids with depression, that is generally speaking a clinical mood disorder that very well should be treated and can be treated off-campus. And I, I just think that it would be a good idea for there to be a clarification that, that at school, in some ways, there's not a lot of the same training that would go for, say, a child who's headed for inpatient. So however you want to massage it, I just don't think it's necessarily clear, and sadly, it needs to be.
And, and I wonder if Ms. Chisholm's actually going to bring five thousands to you soon? And in the five thousands, that are the student policies? And so that's, as you're speaking, Dr. Stern, I'm thinking there probably is a policy within the procedural piece of how we're identifying students or locating or making recommendations for students, is what I believe, I hear where we're kind of going in that direction. And so, yeah, because with the six thousands, we're focused primarily on what's being provided, like, meaning instructionally. So a lot of the guidance, it'll utilize the words guidance counseling, but we call them school counselors. A lot of that is academic practices, there is some crisis, so we do cover the SOS, the signs of suicide. We do cover that in health, so we'll add those things into that curricular. But I do, we will, me and Ms. Chisholm will look, and I made a note, look at the five thousands for this procedural pieces. And if we don't, maybe that's a recommendation that we are able to bring to the Board of Education because we are coming out of that pandemic and we are having situations.
And parents' well intentions sometimes are not clear necessarily, you know, they're like, well, my kid's.
You know, my kid is horribly depressed, what can you do about it? And we want to help, but sometimes in the province of a school-based education code model, we're not dealing with, with the depression that you see from the medical model. And it, there just needs to be an understanding so the child, most importantly, gets the right care.
Agreed.
I'll, I look forward to the five thousand.
Yeah. Wait, what?
No, no offense.
We're still talking.
Does the five thousand look like this, or is it?
There's a lot of work in here.
No, great reading.
Um, all right, well, I'm going to suggest that we pause on this now, because it's.
I got a lot more.
It's six-thirty-three, and we'll bring it into the next meeting. Or if you guys would like, we could set up a study session where we just go through these.
It may not be a bad idea.
We might need to.
If we do it separately, because it's a lot.
I think so, too, because I think that there are a lot of discussions, so.
I think we need that.
I don't want to rush the discussions.
Right, so maybe on Friday, we can pick a time that would work for everybody. I know people are going on vacation, so it's going to be hard to find a time for a study session.
Mandy will be happy to wake up in the middle of the night in Australia to talk about this.
Seventeen hours ahead.
Right, but I would like us to, to finish discussion because so much work has gone into updating them, and as we know, it's a lot of work, and it deserves the.
Absolutely.
It deserves the time. Okay, thank you, Dustin, and we'll pick it up from there.
Are we going around with comments?
Um, the next item on the agenda, well, we don't have public comment this, this evening, so the next item on the agenda will be communication from board members. And I'd like to start with Mrs. Marcus.
Well, in the interest of time.
In the interest of time, I am going to just congratulate all the students that got the awards in the national competition, and wish congratulations to all the people who are being installed tonight at the city council. And I'll pass it on to you now, Mr. Halini.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I don't really have many comments, other than to say, just following that discussion on the six thousands, I just, I'm very grateful that we have, that we have a board that thinks differently and has different skill sets. Clearly, we're lucky to have a Dr. Stern here, thinking about the, the mental, social, emotional well-being of our students, and I think it makes us a better board, so, just, thank you.
Thank you for that, thank you so much. And I'm learning a great deal from all of your skill sets as well.
My skills.
Oh, lots, lots and lots, so thank you.
Couple things, thank you, everybody. There is a wonderful organization called Not Today Cancer, supports the wonderful work of J.J. Duncan honoring her, her son, Mason. They have an event coming up this October, and you can sign up, or September, sorry, I think it's September twenty-second, twenty-fifth. Runsignup.com, and you just look under Beverly Hills, you'll be able to follow the link there. I just, I'm trying to help them with their event, and it's an amazing community event. And they're involving the city as well now, so it'll be much bigger than before. And I also wanted to say, after five years, it should be recognized, the work of Don Blake and TCDS in getting our construction program out of the muck and mire that it was in, and helping us open up Building Eight, Horseman, Building B-one and B-two at the high school, continuing the work on B-three, B-four, and El Rodeo. There was a lot done in five years from kind of a negative starting point. So thank you to Don and his team for their service, as they will be shuffling off after this Friday. Thank you.
Can I make one more comment? I just want to congratulate Mrs. Welts, and give us your luck as the chamber, I mean, at the master of ceremonies for the fire department gala this week.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. I would just like to say, I, you know, congratulations to our new city council members, our re-elected Lester Friedman and John Marash, and also our newly-elected Sharona Nazarian, and re-elected city treasurer Howard Fisher, and I'm very excited to go over to city council today and watch them be installed this evening. So congratulations to all of you for your campaigning and, and your success.
Nothing for me, just a great meeting, and I look forward to joining the board and wishing success to our city council members in Beverly Hills.
Any other comments from anyone else? Nope, okay, I will officially adjourn the meeting, it is six-thirty-eight. Thank you, everybody.